Would lead us, you would continue to give us strength and courage to do the things that you called us to do. And Father, we ask that you would hear our pleas today, that you would guide us and direct us in this agenda. And that you would build up and strengthen the people that are here today. They would hear your words through all the actions that occur here. Father, we ask all of these things in the name of your son, who is our Messiah. Amen.
Amen. All right, pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to repartee for Christian saints. Mission under God. In the blood of the team of Jesus Christ.
Pledge to the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the big Texas. One state under God, one and individual.
Thank you. You may be seated. Just a quick reminder for everybody to silence your cell phones. And I will call this meeting to order at nine oh one AM. We do have a quorum present. All commissioners are here. And item number two is, are there any general announcements? No general announcements? All right, well, I'll move to item number three, public comments. I have, do you want to do your public comment during the agenda item? Or you want to do it now? Okay, all right. We have Bob Reese to talk about agenda item number. Eleven. Discuss and consider authorizing county judge sign a resolution approving assignment of private. Activity bond authority to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs.
Good evening.
Or afternoon.
For morning.
Morning.
The guys over there. Uh, I'm here to speak regarding this item. Uh, I was appointed mid twenty twenty-three to serve on the Board of Directors. Uh, for this organization that you're going to be considering, East Texas Housing Finance Corporation. Along with Cindy Malu, who has served on it um for several years. There's two representatives, board members that serve on the Board of Directors. From each of seventeen counties in East Texas. So there are thirty-four members in the Board of Directors. The reason I'm speaking on this today is because received. An email regarding uh what you're going to be considering today. And that's a forty million dollar bond. Um, that forty million dollar bond, as far as I can tell. From reading the bylaws and the correspondence I've received. I think you need to pause about that. And here's why. Um, I had received no notices of board meetings since I was appointed in mid twenty twenty-three. There's an executive committee that issued this correspondence to you. I requested copies of the bylaws of this corporation and reviewed them. And according to the bylaws, the executive committee is to be appointed by the Board of Directors. Far as I know, there's been no meeting to appoint that executive committee. And I have requested copies of the minutes of meetings where that was done and have not received them. Um, also, as far as. What correspondence I have received, I did receive in March of twenty twenty-four. A certificate and filing with Secretary of State. For the nonprofit periodic report. However, the report was not attached. All that was attached was the receipt and acknowledgement from the Secretary of State that they had received the report. So I have not seen the contents of the report about this nonprofit corporation. Uh, mentioned um kind of the sequence of events. The forty million dollar bond is uh to help and assist with. Uh, new first time home buyers across the seventeen county area. It's a forty million dollar bond is targeted. For homes in the two hundred eighty-five thousand to three hundred and twenty-five thousand approximate or three hundred and thirty-five thousand range. You take the average of that in the middle and divide it into forty million. And divide it into seventeen counties. That's seven homes in Van Zant County. Seven. So I reached out to one of the primary lenders in Van Zant County. And I asked about programs to assist first time home buyers. We already have USDA zero percent down FHA, three and a half percent down with high seller concessions. Multiple state operated down payment assistance programs. Quite a lot of veterans programs, Fanny, uh Fanny and Freddie. Mac conventional also offer lower down payment for first time home buyers. I think the private sector has enough to help out. And I'm concerned about what's going on behind the scenes on this forty million dollar bond. Of my comments. I think you should table it and research further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you have any additional? Okay. All right. Uh. Item number four consent agenda. The consent agenda items considered as regular. Uh, routine business by the commissioner's court will be enacted in one motion. The uh, there will be no separate discussion on these items unless the county judge or commissioner requests an item be removed from the consent agenda. And considered separately. Are there any items that need to be discussed or removed?
I just made the exhumation claim number H to me.
Number H.
Graduation of the American Revolution.
At our last, at uh, at the uh, we had the um. Um, Constitution Day event outside last Thursday, I believe it was the seventeenth, that's Tuesday. And uh, they had a uh, resolution that they asked me to uh, read and sign uh, for constitution week. Okay. And then, so I just wanted, and because it wasn't given to us prior to uh, I wasn't notified prior to the event that we would have it, so. When he had signed it, set it into the uh, consent agenda to ratify the signature. And I believe that it was in the packet, in the uh. The bid of the uh binder. All right, any additional discussion? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second, please.
All right, all those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number five, discuss and consider proclaiming the week starting October seventh. Two thousand twenty-four as National Four-H Week. And I'm going to read this resolution. And it's uh, says whereas uh, Manzant County is proud to honor the Texas Four-H Youth Development Program. Of the Texas A and M Agri Life Extension Service for a hundred and sixteen years. Of providing experience-based education to youth throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas this admirable program. Which seeks to provide a learning experience for all youth through their head, heart, hands, and health. Helps uh, young Texans to acquire knowledge. Develop life skills and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed. Productive and contributing members of our society. And whereas the program's more than five hundred and fifty thousand urban, suburban, and rural youth participants. Ranging in age from eight to eighteen come from diverse ethnic and socionomic. Uh, backgrounds that truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas this pro- this program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success. That it has today were it not for the service of its more than thirty thousand volunteers. Who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout this proud, its proud history, the Four-H program. Has developed positive role models for countless Texans throughout its innovative and inspiring programs. And continues to build character and instill the values that have made our states strong. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Van Zant County hereby designate October sixth through the twelfth. As National Four-H Week in Texas. And commend the uh, Four-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A and M Agri Life Extension Service. And many men and women who have made the program a success. That's our resolution and. Here it is.
Absolutely.
And I.
Make the motion.
Yes, all right, Commissioner Pratt make the motions or second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So you want to get a picture? All right, why don't y'all come up here? Hold, hold the uh. Follow us on the ends. There we go.
Just say bye. All right. I can get y'all a little right here in camera. One, two, three. Let's do it again. One, two, and three, and one, four.
Some of my fondest memories of my youth being in Four-H and all the things that we did. It meant a lot. And the, the uh, county extension agent was a mentor. He was the one that really guided me and got involved in a lot of things that I wouldn't have done. He pushed me. Made me do things. I said, no, I can't do that. Yeah, you can. You can do it. And I appreciate that. And so I see, I see the same thing in this group, this group of people. I've been to several other events and. Incredible what they've been able to do. Uh, thank you. All right, item number six. Discuss and consider uh, library advisory board appointments. Okay?
Good morning. My name is Emily Manning and I am the president of the Van Zant County Sarah Norman Library Advisory Board. On behalf of that board, I would like to recommend Deborah Johnson of Precinct One. Melissa Andy of Precinct Four. And Jan Adamson of Precinct Four. Be appointed to the advisory board to fill vacancies there and ask that they be approved.
All right. Thank you. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
True. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes, and your members are appointed. Uh, item number seven, discuss, consider Van Zant County Historical Commission Board Appointment of Angela Kate Hill. Do we have someone doing that or we just? You just want to stand up? Angela, you want to stand up? Okay, all right. Thank you. So uh, is there a motion to appoint Angela Kate Hill as uh, to the Board of the Van Zant County?
Oh, so.
Second, all right. Motion made second, any further discussions?
Check.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passed. Congratulations. Yes, why don't we do that?
I didn't, I didn't feel right. Both of that library thing, I'm gonna be a shush to the class of all. Oh, well, that is not a. I love. You don't have your bonnet on, do you?
Stand in support.
Front row, if I can get you to slide to the left. Miss Hill, how about put you in the middle? Hey. Hey, a little more to the left. Here we go.
Slide now.
All right, we're right here. One, two, and three. There again, one, two, and three, and one. Thank you.
All right. Item number eight, discuss, consider requests for a variance regarding uh, Canton Vessel's flat located on Van Zant County Road twenty-three eighteen. Van Zant County Road twenty-three twenty-three in Precinct Two.
My name is Sam Michaels. I work with Kimberly Horns. I'm a developer in Canton. We are requesting a variance for the uh, community center requirement that you all have for the RV parks. Uh, ours is not really an RV park. It's vessel homes, which are mini manufactured homes. And they have all the amenities that a community center does have. So we think most people would like this community center that you guys are requesting. So we look to variance for.
Are you asking for a variance also? Precinct two is, is the, is my precinct area. Are you asking for a variance also for sixteen feet? Width on the, on the roads rather? You're gonna do that?
Yeah.
And, and uh, and what all uh, from your perspective is, is in a community center?
So the way I understood it was bathrooms, washer dryer, kitchen of some sort. Each one of these vessels has that and so kind of.
But you also recognize that RV parks, RVs uh, also have all of those amenities also, but.
Yeah.
But they're. The requirement is there, do you know the reason for the requirement?
Is for community gatherings type deal.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what, what my concern is, and maybe we. Maybe we need to chat about this a little bit is that um, is that these rules were put into place for a reason. Now perhaps we need to look and see why they're put in, in place. And uh, if they're put in place for a particular reason and, and we don't know what that reason is in today's meeting. Then it would be unwise for us to grant a variance until we understand that. Now the, the um. Because I'm, I'm not necessarily seeing why we would. Allow a variance. In a situation where you've got uh, uh, you know, uh, similarities.
Yeah.
The only difference between a pod home and an RV is that one's on wheels and one's not.
Yeah.
Correct. Um, so. If we can determine why this was put in, into the rules, we, we will, we, we can move forward with that. But until we know why uh, and, and what that's supposed to accomplish. Then I, I, and, and perhaps you and I, we can, we can chat about this a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, it, my concern about giving a variance against rules that are put in place is, is it would give folks a reason. To come for variances in the future and we wouldn't have the ability to say, no, you can't do that because they would point to Canton Vessel. And say you did it there and you had no reason, you had no reasoning, you had no. Uh, overwhelming purpose for granting this variance. That's what my concern is here. That makes some sense?
Yeah, we, we also, there's, so the other thing was it's not on plaid property. So there's a ranch house on the overall tractable land that we're going to use as the community center. But we are interested that, you know, on divided property.
Yeah, because your planted property is eight, a little over eight acres, correct?
Yeah.
And this, and this is on part of the other uh, the four hundred and fifteen, yeah, four hundred and seven. Um, now, um, one question that, that I'll ask you when, when we visit um privately is um. The work that's already been done out there by the, by the, the developer, what is, what's happened with that's over the last year?
So we were working with Virgil before he passed away. But he let us do the six without a plat. And then he was going to make us do a plat when we did the other fourteen.
And this, and those six are not located on this eight acres.
They are.
They are on this.
We're, we talked to Brian about it, the county engineer, and he told us just show them this to the center. And then get the plaque from the fourteen.
Okay, let's see, uh, it would be, it would be my ask to, to the rest of the uh, of the court today that, that perhaps you and I can visit. Uh, and then, and we can bring this, you know, pretty quickly. What's your timeline?
Uh, we'll check it as fast as possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then uh, that, then that's what I'd ask is, because I want to give the, I want to give the rest of the commissioners an opportunity to know why. This needs to be uh, uh, eliminated.
Yeah.
And, and see if we can do that because I, I think it's, I think the community center um, if we can. If we can bear down on that. That'll give us. The ammunition we need in order to make a good decision.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Your motion to table it?
Uh, my motion is to, is to table this and, and let, and I'm, I'm perfectly fine to put it on the agenda in, in two more weeks so that they can move forward. I don't want to be a hindrance to progress uh, or to development, not at all, but I want to make sure we're making a wise decision.
Yeah, no, we're, we're still looking.
Okay, so we got.
Second, Pearson.
All right, uh, motion by Commissioner Barton to table, second by Commissioner Pearson, clear discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign.
Thanks, sir.
See you next two weeks. All right, item number nine, discuss and consider onshore setting poles in Van Zant County Road easement on Van Zant County Road thirty-one oh four.
Yes, sir. That's in precinct three, uh, uh, thirty-one oh four is. Off of FM eight fifty-nine between I twenty and Edgewood. Uh, onshore approach may uh, uh, wanting to set their poles in the back slope of the easement right next to the fence. And uh. Like we did for Trinity Valley here over in, in uh, Mr. Williams' area here a while back. Uh, I think right before he came in. Anyway, I'm at, I'm at a motion we allow this and it won't affect our easement uh, at all and uh. So that's, that's my motion.
All right, your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I would uh, want to put in the, the minutes, Susan, that it's from. FM eight fifty-nine to County Road thirty-one ten. That covers it.
Yeah.
On the north side. And that the county will uh, never be held responsible if it should have to be relocated or anything uh, that would, that won't cost the county.
Is this uh, are, are they putting these in for, for new development, new?
Yes, sir.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss and consider authorizing the county judge to request a six-month extension to the deadline for disaster recovery. Uh, the disaster recovery deadline uh, for us to uh, to submit all of our claims is November seventeenth. Now we are, we are currently working on the uh. Damages to the roads and the work that we did to cut up trees and throw them. It's called cut and toss, throw them off to the side. We've done that and we're working on getting a claim for that. What we haven't done is the uh, the uh. Removal of the debris that is on the railways and the county roads and we're working on a bid to put out to get that done. But, but there's no way that we would have that completed by uh, November seventeenth. So the request is to TM and FEMA is to extend it for six months to uh, May of twenty twenty-five. And we anticipate that we probably have it done by the end of the year uh, with the bidding that we, that we get done. But anyway, this is, this is, the letter that I composed is in there, explains that it goes through and gives a reason why we need to extend it. It's because we haven't uh, been able to get the, the bidding done on the uh, trigger model.
So moved, Pearson.
All right.
Second.
Second, all right, motion is made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider authorizing county judge to sign a resolution approving the assignment. Of a private activity bond authority, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. This is what uh, my brother Bob Reese was talking about in public comments. I have no. No problem. Uh, I, I've been doing some research on it uh, in regards, uh, it doesn't. Uh, there is no financial obligation on the county. This organization apparently formed in nineteen eighty-one and is designed. To, to be a coalition of uh, seventeen counties to try to get a better uh, uh. The, using the population of seventeen counties. Gives them the opportunity to apply for things that they wouldn't be able to apply for. Otherwise, because the population is not large enough to do that. And what they're looking at is, is a, a bond uh, proposal up to forty million dollars. And they're asking for the assignment to them uh, in that regard. Now this organization uh, we, we uh. We do have two board members on it, but they haven't met in, any reg- regular uh. Frequency and I talked to the, the chairman, uh, Judge uh, Robert Anderson. And I asked him about it and he says they have appointed an executive committee. And the executive committee performs uh, basically takes care of all the board business. And that, that I just uh, I wasn't real comfortable with that. I contacted Neil Franklin, the uh, county judge in Smith County. Because he's on executive committee and asked him uh, about it. And they submitted the agreement to their lawyer and uh, they found no problem with it. So uh, but it's uh. I have no problem tabling it today and getting further information. I have approached them about. Uh, the executive committee doing the business of the, of the organization and. He informed me that the bylaws state that the, the executive committee can do that. I haven't seen the bylaws, so I don't know. So uh, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion.
Uh, I, I have some comments.
Okay.
And I'm sad that there's nobody here from their, from their executive committee that would talk about this, but let me tell you this. Is that I'm not in favor ever of any governmental entity or nonprofit entity involving themselves in market-based activity. I don't feel like it's right for us to undercut our banks and our lenders, our mortgage institutions. They're out there hustling to do the work. And, and as uh, Mr. Reese said, there are plenty of opportunities that the free market has put together. For low-income individuals to be able to afford houses, to afford their first time. USDA program is great. Uh, and it doesn't impact the same way that this would. I don't know what this executive committee or what this nonprofit is paying their directors. I don't know how their, what their origination fees are. I don't know if it is, i- i- if it is a good idea or not, but what I do remember is that there was a savings alone debacle back several, a couple of decades ago. Where they were doing some predatory lending, et cetera. There's a lot more that I will need in order to be comfortable. So I, I, I'm fine if we table it, but at this point, I, it does not have my uh, it doesn't have my support. Especially considering that their board that we have people on. Uh, doesn't even meet. They're not providing any information and that it's some executive board. Has the ability to go in there and make decisions without the two representatives that Van Zant County has over there being able to participate. That's number one. And number two, I don't know that they have even provided support to seven people. In Van Zant County for house purchases over the last, since nineteen eighty-one. So there's a lot here for me before I can get behind a, a, a resolution given bond authority. That needs to be answered.
Okay, so you want to make the motion to table?
I, I.
You already did.
I, I did, okay.
You made a motion to table and, and I'm saying I would, I would just say no at this point and, until they provide additional information. And so I would agree to table. I'll second the tabling.
Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes or motion to table passes. Item number twelve, discuss and consider authorizing county judge to sign the fiscal year twenty-five Savins Grant Contract. And he's not in here, she.
And she's tied up in a train.
Uh, Savins is, is a, a victim's uh, grant that we get, uh, I believe for uh. Uh, have it in here. Okay, there we go. It's uh, Savin stands for uh, the statewide automated victims notification service. And uh, we get um, uh, we actually pay into this in order to uh. Uh, have our victims notified of what uh. From the statewide entity. And uh, we do get, I think, something uh, in return in that grant.
Yeah, if you, you uh, if you have just a moment, the, the. Victims. When they. Uh, have been. Uh, wh- when they became a victim and the, and the perpetrator goes to jail, uh, those victims can, can sign up on the statewide notification system to receive updates. Whether. That individual is coming up from parole or release or whatever the case may be. And so I, I, I believe that this is a very worthwhile program. Uh, but it does have certain obligations that the county has to uh, perform and then the state. Pays us back for those uh, for, for those works, but after the fact. Uh, but first of all, we need to be supporting our victims. We need to let them know exactly what uh, those perpetrators are doing, where they are. And when they're going to get out so that uh, so that those folks can, can prepare themselves mentally and physically for that, for that eventuality. Um, that. So I, I, I am interested in knowing the obligations and required reports and whether or not we have somebody that does that now.
Yes.
Just a renewal.
Yeah.
We do this every year.
The auditor's department.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Williams, I did not recognize this.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Williams. I did not recognize this Savin as it being the acronym yesterday. Uh, but now that I hear what it stands for, I do know what this grant is. The system is called VIMLEAK.
Yes.
Um, it is, a- a- as you said, a statewide notification system. It gives them release from local jail, release from T E C. It also gives them court dates. Um, Melissa Cheney in my office is who facilitates it, signs the victims up for it, um, and does all the reporting.
Good. I, I can fully support this. I'd make a motion that we approve.
Second, Pearson.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Motion passes. Item thirteen, discuss and consider approving election service contract between Van Zant County and Martinsville, I S D. For election to be held November the fifth. And I'm, that'd be you, Susan.
But this is their school board election that they're gonna have at the same time that we're doing our election. So it's just a contract with them so that they can be on our ballot.
And because it's a joint election, there's no charge to them, correct?
No charge on the chief. So that they will be paying for their ballots and stuff. So after the elections, what we'll do is we'll go through and see how we bounce, bring in all their information on. It's gonna have that five boxes. It's gonna be two B, uh, which is going to be, uh, let's see here, old debt church, four A, which is going to be persistent with God. Four C, been to the fire department. Four T, Indian community center. And four E, which is the British scholarship student center.
My motion.
All right. Motion made in second.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion?
Yes, sir. I do not understand why they are still not paying something just because there's a joint election where we're helping them out. They're helping us out. They should pick up part of the cost. We can, we cannot bear the cost of other governing bodies expenses as we go through time. But they're, they're tax collecting entity. Uh, I believe they should pay, they should pay something. We paid a lot of money for these machines.
What would? The percent or the contract?
Yeah, I mean, just, just because it's a joint election, that, that they should not be off the hook. Let's just play it the other way. It's a joint election. Let them pay it off.
Yeah.
But they would not, they would not want to do that. So we should, we should be fair about it. Not just, not just the March Mill. If it's the city of Willspone, the city of Canton, if it's a joint election and they're on that ballot and they're not having to provide their machines, they should still pay something.
All right. Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Do you want to consider what Keith's talking about?
It's up to you. You made your motion.
Yeah.
Well, it's, uh, let's talk about that. So in this regard, the motion, let's discuss what Keith just said.
All right. So Susan, what, what is the normal procedure for, uh, charging for, uh, on a, uh, not a, not a joint election?
It's on. The equipment costs.
Her machine.
And they got two machines. Oh, the printer considered a separate machine?
One, you have to have this back, Susan. Because you're probably gonna need to talk to them, uh,
Right.
to, to negotiate that.
Have we always done it? We've always done it. Well, I would say we go ahead since you haven't done it pretty quick. Let's just approve this and then talk about it from the neck, from the, from forthcoming from now on.
Paragraph seven, did you, did you see paragraph seven on this?
And it shows fifty-two cents each on the ballot, but also shows fifty percent of the cost for programming for all of them.
The machines are gonna be there anyway.
The pass of not charged. I think charged it, I think, in fifteen years.
Yeah.
And so I'm not saying in the future, we can put it down, but we would need to be prepared and figure out exactly what if we want to charge the five hundred or we want to cut that back maybe because we are having an election.
Yeah. We have to be there anyway.
Right.
So they're paying fifty percent of the cost for programming and fifty-two cents a ballot on, on.
Are they in some kind of different election cycle? Because a lot of other schools done theirs back in May, didn't they?
Some of them do this, some of them do not. This is for their school board.
The cost of equipment is getting so high, you're gonna see all those cities and schools move towards a, a time when the counties have an election. So they don't have to, we have any money anymore. If we do it this way.
What dollar amount are you talking about?
Who I know.
What, what dollar amount was you wanting to add?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Well, I say some sky hurt pretty quick. My opinion, approve it and then we talk about it forthcoming from now on.
Two, two fifty, I mean, I'm not talking about pay the whole amount. I'm just thinking, we've never charged before, but we've never had five hundred thousand dollars in our machines. You know? That, that we've got to take care of all the upgrades on and everything, uh, for, for other taxing entities not to have to, to go out and buy election equipment. They should help cover our costs.
I'm not in favor of putting, um, our clerk in a bind. Uh, at this point, if we want to come back in the future, I'd be, I'd be good.
Come up with a policy.
Come up with.
Work for Susan to come up with a policy.
I'll motion again to approve.
I stand by my second.
Okay. All right. Motion is made in a second. Uh, uh, is there any further discussion?
I think that would be fair. We, we will need to have a, a workshop or consider this.
Okay.
In the future, uh, to, to give all the other taxing entity time to know you want the budget for this and.
Okay. All right. I'll make note of that, uh, charge from the chief. So all those in favor of the motion on the table, please, uh, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Motion passes. Item fourteen, discuss and consider improve milestone payments number seven three two two three four eight, seven three four four zero zero eight one, seven three four seven four zero eight, seven three two two three six eight, seven three four uh, five seven nine eight and seven three three nine one seven D.
Five three three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Five three three nine one seven D to Saber.
Got it. Barry, zoom in. Well, Jim, I thought Barry was gonna be here to give you a better explanation, but essentially this is related to towers that's being built and going up. They Saber has reached this level in the milestones. And if you saw in your packet, Barry sent over, he sends email confirming he's done it in his patches and he approves his milestone payments. And that, that's what this is.
I'll move, Pearson.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion is made in second. And any further discussion? Towers look good. That's all I'm saying. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Motion passes. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider adoption of order setting term of Van Zant County Commissioner's Court for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And, uh, after Keith pointed out some stuff to me, we, we changed it back to what it normally is. And that is on, uh, it's every other Wednesday beginning on October the ninth. Every other Wednesday beginning October ninth. So it's on the same schedule that we, we have been.
So move, Pearson.
All right.
Second.
Uh, okay. Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider one thirty-nine oh eight local government code approval of spending by certain county and precinct officers. And, um, I assume Sandy put this in here just as a matter of, uh, force. And this, uh, court order is in reference to section one thirty-nine oh eight local government code approval for spending by certain county and precinct officers. Says incumbent county official does not, does not seek another term or is not reelected to office of a county during the time following the date, the results of the official canvas of the primary or election returns are announced. The incumbent shall not spend, uh, spend more than twenty-five percent of the new budget, which begins October first of the election year. The incumbent shall come to the commissioner's court for approval to spend any monies that exceed twenty-five percent of the budget per line item. So this is pretty routine.
That is, that is not quite correct. Uh, I'm, what you read is, you read what you saw. Uh, the, um, the actual code says that the court sets the amounts, uh, that you cannot go over. And anytime that you go over the amount that the court sets, you have to have court approval. So we normally, routinely, years passed, we set it at twenty-five percent because the, the person going out has got twenty-five percent of the year spent. So, and I agree with that. But, uh, I want to make an exception. I agree with twenty-five percent of the line items. But I would like to make a motion that it's twenty-five percent with the exception of line item equipment purchase in precinct three, which is O two three six two three seven, uh, five seven one, equipment purchases. I've got some money budgeted there. I've talked with the incoming commissioner. He knows what it's budgeted for. We're gonna go ahead and be purchasing that equipment before January the first. And so I would like to make a motion that it would do twenty-five percent per line item with the exception of line item O two three six two three five seven one, equipment purchases.
I'd like to add one more exception to that.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add that money spent on the FEMA work does not apply to that. Because that FEMA money will be reimbursed back in.
Well, the last line of this proposal says the incumbent shall come to the commissioner's court for approval to spend any monies that exceed twenty-five percent of budget per line item. Isn't that exactly what we're talking about doing?
You, you, you could. Yes, sir. You could.
So it's covered in here.
Not necessarily. Because I'm moving forward this. I, I, I need to make a P O for, for some of this equipment that I'm buying. I can't make a, a P O will be allowed because I'm going to go over twenty-five percent. So I can't make a P O, so I can't go get all this lined up without coming back to court first. And then that goes everything that much further behind. So that's why I, I listed that one item. Yes.
You good, you good with that, Bobby?
Yes, I'm good with it.
You, you can. You can, but it draws, it draws that out. I've got to come back to you and ask for permission for a P O. Then I've got to come back and ask for permission to pay. So that's why I asked you to leave out this one line.
Well, I, I don't know that we necessarily need to leave it out, but I mean, I think you're complying with that last right now. You're saying, hey, I need to go over on this one. So, uh, we could approve the, the, we could approve the, the, this line item on the agenda. And today, it, you know, that can.
Yes, sir. Well, I put it on it. I want, I want an exception on this line item today that, that I will be going over twenty-five percent of it and I want court approval.
And that's why I wanted to add the exception for the FEMA. Open a P O up and any work I do continuing on FEMA will go onto that P O. And it won't count against my twenty-five percent because that money will reimburse back in later after I'm gone.
Could I ask a question on that upon, upon both of you? The part that you're talking about, Keith, approving that if they do on that one, that last thing. When you approve it, if, if they approve it, that's one time deal, right? It's not something that's approved now.
No.
Right.
No, just this year.
Okay. And then on the FEMA bill, uh, that's, to me, is kind of a tricky deal because we're not guaranteed a portion of that back, right?
No, only seventy-five, only seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
And, and you're not guaranteed that.
Right. That's what's it.
If they approve it, you can get up to seventy-five percent.
So I mean, I, I, I understand what you're asking. But to me, that could be kind of easy to what he got reimbursed. So if you go and show it, I mean, you're not.
Well.
I'm asking.
Well, what, what, uh, what he has reference to is like yesterday, I got, I got approval to start doing some of FEMA work. I've got, I've got fifteen roads that I have to have done by November the first. Yes, that, this money will come back, but it won't come back in by January the first. You'll get it back later on. So, and, and we have a line item for FEMA. So what he's saying is if if we hold that to that twenty-five percent, then he, he can't start working on those roads until, when he gets twenty-five percent, he's got to quit working on them until the new person comes in. And he may have an opportunity to work on it.
I know.
And I said, I'll track that work in a P O separate so you know exactly how much is going to that.
On the.
Just to be clear, the statute does not set the twenty-five percent. The statute allows the court to set whatever percentage it wants.
Correct.
And that applies not just to you guys, but to any elected official in the county who is, I'll use the term lamed up. Not going to be there after January first for whatever reason. They've not spent more than whatever percentage you've set on any single line item.
Correct.
So you need to set a percentage that applies to all elected officials. And then you can address if you all want any exceptions or whatever.
Well, that's, that's what this does. It says an incumbent county official does not seek another term or is not reelected to office of accounting during the time following the date of the results of the official canvas of the primary or election returns are announced. The incumbent shall not spend or, uh, more than twenty-five percent of the new budget, which begins October first of the election year.
Officials who already have been nominated, I would like to say. Statute uses the word redominated, but you do have officials who already chose not to re-run whatever, who are not redominated. So it will apply to them as of October first of the new budget.
Right. So this covers them also, right? And so the incumbent shall not come to, uh, the incumbent shall come to the commissioner's court, uh, for approval to spend any monies that exceed twenty-five percent of the budget per line item.
But it can be any percentage that we set here.
Yeah.
That's correct. There's the there's right straight off the brass one. On what the actual law says.
Well, I motion to approve you, Keith, the line item done, over twenty-five. In the, in the FEMA.
So your motion is twenty-five percent plus, plus the two exceptions? Yes.
What, what is, uh, uh, do you have an account number?
I don't have a FEMA. I have mine.
Yours? Yeah.
O two three six two three five seven one.
O two three.
Six two three.
Six two three.
Five seven one.
Five three one.
That's under capital and it's, uh, equipment purchases.
Okay. And let's put, um, uh, set that account in the, uh,
I was gonna do three, three, five as per material to come from for FEMA.
Three, three, five.
Do you need that one too, Keith? The FEMA?
Well.
He will.
Well, they all are.
Yeah. You'll need that one.
Yeah, but there'll be a.
Did you actually budget? Any money in that account?
Three, three, five. Yeah, that's your normal road bridge material. I was gonna track the FEMA stuff on a separate P O so we know what's that.
But three, three, five is your normal road and bridge materials, right?
Your bank or your front. We have, we have, we didn't move anything from reserve and set FEMA accounts, sir. So I was just gonna track it on a P O so we knew what we spent related to FEMA. We got all the documentation through the T M, the FEMA, on what we're working on, where we're working or at, and what we expect to you. It'll be easy to keep up with.
But you need to make a note there, the, uh, FEMA, FEMA repairs only.
Yeah.
I'm just not gonna put the account number. I'm just gonna put FEMA repairs only that way. We, we need to set up a separate account. We can do it that way.
Typically, in the past, we've had it FEMA stuff, there's a separate account set up for all FEMA, separate line.
Okay.
Does y'all want me to still on the ministry three, three, five line item?
No, just put FEMA uh related uh costs. Okay, so the motion would be. Uh, what, what I just read right here, in addition, with the exception of O two, three, six, three, two, six, two, three. Uh, five, seven, one, and FEMA related repairs, is that, is that correct, draft or motion? Okay, so uh, and you made that motion, Brandon?
Yes, sir.
And there's a second.
Second.
Second, Mike. Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? Motion passes. Item number seventeen, discuss, consider adoption of the Van Zandt County. Sheriff and constable fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, who are required by law to. Uh, adopt a schedule at this meeting for like first of next year. And that is, schedule is in Europe, they did not change it from twenty twenty-four, it's the same. So is there a motion?
Don't move, Pearson.
Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eighteen, discuss, consider uh adoption of Van Zandt County. Fire marshal office fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Same thing as with the sheriff's schedule, however, he did, he did uh add some things to it. He did ma- make some modifications to the fee schedule from twenty twenty-four. Uh, so is there a motion to?
So maybe.
Okay, motion, second, there's a, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number nineteen, discuss, consider adoption of the holiday schedule for twenty twenty-four. And that is a. Get to it. I'll read out the holidays. Was that, uh, number nineteen?
Nineteen.
Uh, the holidays are Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, the day after Thanksgiving. Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Junior Day. Uh, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Juneteenth Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. But total fourteen holidays.
I would like to uh. If, if we're gonna do the, the Juneteenth Day, I'd like for it to be observed the twentieth, the reason being is. None of the plants shut down as far as our asphalt plants. And if we have a holiday in the middle of the week on a Thursday, this, this is the only one besides the, the New Year's and Christmas. Uh. You're, we're basically losing two days for the roads. Cause you're not gonna do anything on nineteenth, and the twentieth, you're already behind, so you're not gonna start anything new on that Friday. So I would like to have that moved to a Friday, so you can have a full week and, and have everything done instead of losing two days of productivity.
Well, the, the problem with that is it's a federal holiday, which means all of your banks, all of your financial institutions are gonna be closed. And all the courts are gonna be closed.
But it doesn't affect the roads, though.
It affects the courts, it affects the clerks, it affects the uh tax assessor collector. It affects a lot of other, because they would be close, uh, they wouldn't be able to necessarily have access to things that. Because the other agencies are closed, cause it's a federal holiday.
Well, that was my suggestion.
Um, I. You know, working in the, in the real estate um arena and in the courts, um, it, 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 it could create a, a huge problem. Uh, for all those other entities, um. And while I understand completely the difficulty with roads, uh, I think. Changing that date for the entire county, um, and all these other departments could be dis. Could be a disadvantageous uh in the overall, and so, you know, uh.
But your schools are closed.
I, I think that, that we should leave, that, that we should leave the date. Uh, and, and I'd like to make a motion to accept the holiday schedule as, as proffered in the agenda, um, you know. Just because I, I, I think it's gonna disrupt a lot more. Uh, unfortunately, it's gonna disrupt a lot more agencies uh and, and entities within the courthouse than just roads. Um, and, and so, you know, my motion is to accept them as, as, as listed.
And we, we could come back with a uh provision, and I don't know, there may be provision already where. You could go up to the uh, go ahead and work on that holiday and then give them another day off for that holiday.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
It's already there, he's, he's the elected official, he, he can let him off all week if he wants to. Or even, or even work all week, that's, he's, he's the elected official over his department. I agree with you, Brandon, it'll be a whole lot better on my operation also.
Sure.
To, to work that Thursday and be off Friday, uh. But I forgot I'm about to bank again, closing.
Yep, yeah, okay.
We did change that rule on banking holiday time, though.
Change what rule?
We changed where you can no longer bank holiday time, if you, if you work that day, you get paid that.
You get paid, you get paid for your holiday.
Mm-hmm. So I made the motion to accept it as written.
Second.
Okay, so uh, hold on. Motion made, second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twenty, discuss, consider approval of bond for Nicole. Next assistant auditor in the amount of five thousand dollars.
So motion made.
Alright. Motion by Commissioner Pearson saying, my Commissioner Pratt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passed with item number twenty-one, discuss, consider authorizing candidate to sign the title uh. For a county legal services contract for the period of. Uh, October first, twenty twenty-four to November, uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I believe this is for CPS, indeed, this is for CPS services uh that uh.
Lawyers and CPS first.
Right, okay. Lawyers and CPS case. Is there a motion? Motion to uh, uh, approve.
Williams motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twenty-two, discuss, consider approving. County judge has signed interlocal agreement with Andrews Center for October first, twenty twenty-four. To September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, this is our annual agreement with them for services. And, and is there a motion to approve the uh? Contract.
Law motion.
Second, Pearson.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twenty-three, discuss, consider authorizing candidate to sign contract with Peoples. For internet service for L three Harris at the shares in the internet service for the uh radio tower.
Let me explain a little type over there, after L three Harris, it's just that equipment. And when I actually provide for L three Harris, it's for the L three Harris equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, and then, and we did budget for that, so, fiber, it's a fifty by fifty for two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
So move, Pearson.
Alright, your motion been, uh, Matt, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item twenty-four, discuss, consider the sale of a twenty twenty-one Peterbilt truck, VIN number. One X P H D U nine X seven. Hold on, seven B D, one, one, seven, five, five, two, uh, Van Zandt County ID number. Uh, zero, nine, three, three, five, and that's nineteen ninety-six Peterbilt truck, VIN number one X P C D. R eight, X, X, T, X. No, T N, uh, three, eight, five, zero, two, nine, Van Zandt ID number zero, nine, one, uh, zero, nine, five, one, six. From Roden Bridge Precinct one to Roden Bridge Precinct three.
Yes, Jim, and this was the, the two trucks we put the reserve on, and obviously they didn't sell. And concerning with the reserve, we didn't want taxpayers to lose money, by transferring on the precinct three, they won't lose money. And by him giving me the thirty thousand dollars from, I can fix you more roads. So people precinct one benefit, people precinct three benefit, county comes in and we're all, I'll make a motion to approve this contract.
I'll say it.
Alright, motion been made, and second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item twenty-five, discuss, consider equipment owned by Roden Bridge Precinct one and Road and Bridge Precinct three.
Well, Chad and I both put this on there, oh, Chad and I partnered on some equipment. We, way back, uh, one of them was way back, but the covert. Cleanout machine, and a lay down machine, and so. We talked, and I briefly talked with uh Mr. Phillips, that uh, we feel like, uh, we need to. Dissolve this partnership, and then if, if Mr. Phillips and, and uh. Oh, John Blan.
Mitch.
Mitch and Mr. Curtis decided to, to partner on some equipment, that's their, that's their privilege, but uh, so uh. What Chad and I thought is I'd transfer fifty percent of the covert cleaning machine. My fifty percent to precinct one. He'd transfer his fifty percent of the lay down machine to precinct three. So that way it's, it's all said and done, a clean cut before these two new gentlemen come in. Well, that's our, that's my motion.
Second.
Fifty percent of the original cost, is that what you're saying?
We're not actually moving any.
We're not moving any money.
Right.
People in our precinct one, we now own a hundred percent of the.
Okay.
Of the cleanout machine, precinct three will own a hundred percent of the lay down machine.
And is a, is a lay down machine currently in precinct three?
It is.
In the covert.
In the precinct.
Okay, so it's, it's just like an accounting cleanup, right?
Yes, sir, that's all we're, that's all we're doing is straightening up, that way, when uh, when we both leave office and they, and they do their audit. The equipment's work goes, it, it'd be all straightened up and, and be a clean, clean cut for the new commissioner. Uh, Mr. Phillips was, was good with that.
Okay. So uh, you wanna make the motion?
Yes, sir, I might, I, I just did.
Chad, Chad's second.
Okay.
To, to transfer fifty percent, precinct three would transfer fifty percent. Their fifty percent of the cleanout machine to precinct one. Precinct one would transfer their fifty percent of the lay down machine to precinct three.
Okay. Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twenty-six, discuss, consider accepting a donation from Raymond Watts Senior for a thousand dollars for work on Van Zandt County Road. Thirty-four, twelve, located in precinct three.
Yes, sir, there was, I brought five, or, or five thousand dollars worth of donations last time, uh, Mr. Watts uh, uh. Brought a check, and he wanted to do the same, but this is a, a strictly a donation on work that's. Uh, it's, it's a post work, we did some work out there, and then the folks wanted to donate towards helping do it. And so I make a motion, we accept this thousand dollar donation, and it goes to precinct three, Roden Bridge.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twenty-seven, opposed executive session. In compliance with section five, five, one point zero seven four of the Texas Government Code. To deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee or. To hear a complaint or charge against an officer employee, so we will now exit our meeting at ten oh four. And uh, regular meeting and going.